Welcome, everybody, to tonight's City of Wildwood's Planning and Zoning Commission for August 19th, 2019. On tonight's agenda, we have two public hearing items, one letter of recommendation, and one correspondence item. Does the department have any opening comments?
No, sir.
Okay. Can I have a motion for the approval of the minutes?
Mr. Chair, can we do a roll call vote, please? Or, excuse me, a roll call?
Roll call.
Thank you.
Okay.
Commissioner Helfry, Commissioner Levitt, Commissioner Cohen, Commissioner Gragnani, Commissioner Beatty, Commissioner Depler, Commissioner Simpson, Chair Lee, Council Member Werther.
Present.
Mayor Bowlin. Thank you.
Okay. Now, we'll do a motion for approval of minutes or an action. Commissioner Gragnani, second. Commissioner Beatty. All who's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Sentenced. Moving on to public comment session. Go ahead, Joe.
Mr. Chair, as you mentioned, we do have two public hearings scheduled for discussion tonight on this particular agenda. And I just wanted to advise that the first component of public participation is for any other items relating to the agenda. Anyone here to speak on the two public hearing, they'll be able to do that after the department does a brief presentation at the start of both. So, I'm going to ask Mr. Newberry just to read the cards that aren't related to the public hearings, but for the individuals in the audience, don't be, um, don't feel like you're being missed. We'll come back to you when we get to the public hearings themselves.
Mr. Newberry.
Mr. Chair, I've received no cards for the general public comment session.
So, moving on, um, in the City of Wildwood, public hearings are truly intended to accept comments and questions concerning these items. Since this is a public hearing and it is only intended to provide information on these requests, no action is planned on these items tonight, and consideration of them is to be taken no earlier than September 16th, 2019. The city's Department of Planning will address the comments, questions, and concerns that are raised tonight and include them as part of their formal recommendation to the Planning and Zoning Commission. Public hearings are conducted as described in the handout provided on the table in the reception area along with information on these matters. The commission will allow our parties adequate time to present their positions and ask that you respect all opinions by other speakers and avoid interrupting anyone during their time at the podium. Anyone wanting to speak or receive future information on these items should fill out a speaker's card and leave it with Mr. Newberry. In addition, information on these items can be found at the city's website, www.cityofwildwood.com. The commission would like to thank you for your cooperation and participation in tonight's hearing. And if we have quite a few speakers, can we limit it to five minutes per speaker?
Unless corrected by the city attorney, I think that's at the discretion of the chair of the commission.
Yes, you may.
So, we'll limit comments to five minutes and, again, try not to repeat items that are already brought up. Mr. Newberry.
PZ 13-19, City of Wildwood, Missouri, 16860, Main Street, Wildwood, Missouri, 63040, care of Department of Planning. A request for the preparation of a recommendation by the Planning and Zoning Commission upon an item relating to an extension of a moratorium that is associated with PZ 1 and 1A-99, WJ Burn Builders, Inc., 3112 Shady Glen Estates Drive, Wildwood, Missouri, 63038, which incorporates an approved plan residential development overlay district that authorizes a 23-lot residential subdivision located on an 18.33 acre tract of land being situated on the north side of Strecker Road, east of Inglebrook Drive. Locator numbers 22U 240024, 22U 330031, and 22U 330062. Street addresses 177 Strecker Road, 165 Strecker Road, and 173 Strecker Road. Given the current stay and the issuance of permits for the development of the site in accordance with the approved site development plan has been in place for over 11 years, but still requires certain determinations and actions relative to the subject tract of land, Ward 2.
Thank you, Mr. Newberry. Mr. Vunich.
Mr. Chair and members of the Planning and Zoning Commission, before beginning the department's brief presentation on this particular matter, it would like to introduce into the record the following items. The city's charter, the city's zoning ordinance, Chapter 415 of the Wildwood Municipal Code, the file that has been developed specifically for PZ 13-19, subject of tonight's hearing, any testimony or other items that are provided tonight by both the Planning and Zoning Commission and anyone from the public speaking at the podium. Mr. Chair and members of the Planning and Zoning Commission, in preparation of this particular public hearing, the Department of Planning went through a large and voluminous number of files, papers, plans, and et cetera, hoping to put together what it would like to call a summary of the major or most pertinent documents. That is collectively what is attached to the department's authored zoning primer. The information is not all-inclusive, so I do want to state that as part of the record. But what the department did provide are what I believe the major discussions and associated actions with the moratorium that was put into place in December of 2007. The moratorium ultimately did lead to litigation. The litigation is ongoing, and certainly if there are questions regarding the litigation, Mr. Young and I will not be able to discuss them in open session, but suffice to say there is litigation involving the developer, owner of this property in the City of Wildwood. So, if any of the Planning and Zoning Commission members would like to see the collective files that we have maintained since the initial zoning request was submitted in 1998, they are available, and all you need to do is just call and we'll pull the files, set them out on the table, and anyone is free to look at them, and we can certainly make copies of any information you feel would be beneficial to your consideration of this particular request. The request is, for the most part, a continuation of what is in place at this time, as mentioned in December of 2007, and that followed actions by the city relative to the development of the Strecker Forest Site. And those actions included the rezoning of the property and ultimately the approval of a site development plan to allow 23 lots to be developed on the 18-and-a-half-acre parcel of ground. Ultimately, though, shortly after those actions were taken, it became clear that there were still lingering concerns about the condition of the property, given its proximity to the Bliss Site, which is infamous in many regards here, both in the Midwest but across the United States, and the fact that the Environmental Protection Agency and the Missouri Department of Natural Resources seemed to have gaps or lapses in some of their data and information, and certainly in their testing and the protocols associated with the Bliss Site and those sites surrounding it. The testimony that was provided to the city council, which is reflected in the minutes that's included in your packet of information, was emotional, and obviously, from the perspective of city council, difficult not to hear and act upon to the benefit of public safety. Public safety has always been the principal goal behind the moratorium and the efforts to better understand the site and its environmental condition and suitability for any use, regardless of its residential or not. Given the circumstances, a zoning that is approved and in place, a site development plan that is approved both by the Planning and Zoning Commission and city council, the next step in the development process is the issuance of certain permits. So, the city council was faced with a dilemma, and that dilemma required quick action. That quick action included the establishment of the moratorium, which is reflected in the pertinent set of minutes from that particular meeting in 2007. The necessity to do it as quickly as possible to forestall any issuance of permits and any disturbance associated with the site did not necessarily lead to all the i's being dotted and the t's crossed. Now, moving forward approximately 12 years, the developer has initiated renewed interest in moving forward with a project on the property. A revised site development plan has been submitted that now reflects 18 lots with single-family detached residences upon them instead of 23. The revised plan now also reflects an environmental covenanted area that was discovered over the last 12 years, primarily on the efforts of residents in the area of Strecker Forest and the city council. The covenanted area required the sanitary sewer line to be shifted from the east boundary to more the west boundary to avoid any disturbance of that particular location. So, there's been a string of changes associated with the project and the plan. The department has reviewed that plan and identified that if it is to move forward, at some point, there needs to be another public hearing associated with it. But at this stage, that is still a question of when that would be scheduled, if any time in the near future. Saying that there is a certain amount of urgency, a decision was made amongst the senior management and the city attorney of the city that we would need to kind of reinvigorate the moratorium, and in this case, do it according to accepted case law that has been through the litigation process to lead us to a successful conclusion. Under the recommendation of the city attorney, the appropriate approach is to hold the public hearing, let all parties comment on the moratorium. Thereafter, a recommendation is prepared, acted upon by the Planning and Zoning Commission, and then again by city council. So, tonight is the first step in three steps, the public hearing associated with the moratorium. Again, concluding the department's presentation is the fact that if something is missing of a germane nature, it was not intentional. If information is provided by those public speakers tonight that indicates a set of documents, a study, or something else is necessary, if it's available in the Department of Planning, we'll certainly provide it. If not, we'll do our best to locate it and provide it to you before we ask you to make a decision in this regard. Given the proposal is in the wings, so to speak, we will have a recommendation back to the Planning and Zoning Commission on September 3rd, so the next meeting, and that recommendation will be in draft form, but prepared if the Planning and Zoning Commission concurs to be forwarded to city council for its meeting on September 9th. So, a bit of a process, but we're trying to minimize the time associated with it while giving you all the information you need to make the best decision possible. Mr. Chair, with that, the department will conclude its presentation, but if city attorney Young would like to add anything that I've said or correct me in anything I've said wrong regarding law, which is probably everything, I'd like to turn the floor to him.
Mr. Chairman, I have nothing to add. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Vunich.
Are there any questions of the department at this stage? Again, if there are questions that you think of as the public speaks, or any questions the public may request, we'll do our best to write them down and respond to them before we conclude the public hearing.
Commissioner Gragnani.
Mr. Vunich, I just have one quick question so that I'm perfectly clear in my own mind. When you spoke of the recommendation coming back in two weeks to the Planning and Zoning Commission, and then two, and then a week following that to the council, that is still relevant only to the moratorium?
That's correct.
Okay.
The department, as noted in the letter that was part of the primer, has advised the petitioner that a new public hearing will be required relative to the revised plan, because the revised plan actually isn't as consistent with the site-specific ordinance as the department believed just to consider it acceptable. So, if we do a new public hearing on the ordinance amendments and site plan, we'll post that the full 15 days in advance of the hearing. We'll have signs on the site. We'll do a mailing within 3,000 to 5,000 feet of the property. We'll go through our full process, and then that starts the process with the Planning and Zoning Commission, and as you know, there'll be many steps in that process here.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vunich. Mr. Newberry, speaker, cards.
Mr. Topick?
the opportunity to make these comments, and they'll be kind of short. Basically, it's unfortunate that the City of Wildwood is stuck with a problem that was created by Bliss and, or by the EPA in St. Louis County. The saga starts with Russell Bliss, who, with his hauling business, was responsible for this tragedy by dumping hundreds of gallons of toxic fluids in pits that he created on his property, and in addition, barrels, hundreds of barrels, he buried on both his property, the Callahan Site, and other sites in the St. Louis area. Russell Bliss has changed the lives of many people in the greater St. Louis area by creating what has been referred to as an environmental disaster in Missouri. The details of this story are chronicled in a book entitled Killing Horses, written by Judy Pyatt. I had the honor of meeting with her, with Judy, on April of 2010, um, and this courageous woman published this book at her own expense and signed my copy with the following words to Dan, "A fighter in the fight, with my best wishes." In a sidebar, she said, "While I can fight, however, I will probably never win. The powers-to-be will make sure that I don't win. There is too much at stake for developers, and since land is a priceless commodity in the county." While it started with Russell Bliss, the saga continued with St. Louis County approving the development of subdivisions next to or in close proximity to the Bliss Site. Bliss used a mixture of oil and toxic waste to control the dust on roads and horse arenas. This not only killed horses, but caused birds to drop from the sky and caused an entire town to be wiped off the face of the nation. That's Time Beach. I understand that the City of Wildwood has spent over $600,000 in an effort to make sure they are, the area is known as Strecker Forest Site, be safe for development. To my knowledge, the city's last official documents, I believe, prior to this public meeting and the package of data submitted therein, were two white papers dated August 28th, 2016, presented to both the EPA and the MD, MDNR in a closed meeting in August of 2016. I don't know the exact date of that meeting, but it was sometime in August. I believe the city will follow its conscience and make the right decision on this matter, keeping in mind the welfare of residents of Wildwood. Thank you again for allowing me to express my thoughts on this issue.
Thank you for your comments. Travis.
Ms. Vedvig.
Jean Vedvig, 16709 Clayton Road, Wildwood, Missouri, 63011, Ward 4. This area came to my attention while working on the Planning and Zoning Commission, and the area was in 1998, and I met some residents in 1999, and the city, the city, in my opinion, has been pretty diligent about representing the residents and working hard on an impossible situation. I had some other comments, but with regards to the way Joe had made his presentation, I'll refrain from some of those comments tonight. They're mostly rhetorical questions. But this zoning and this moratorium, actually, the moratorium is not about the zoning. It's about the future. It's about the lives. There have been, um, there have been at least four children die, and we can't prove that right now, but they had four different kinds of leukemia, and several of those were related to benzene. And what's important is a lot of the studies and some of the information that you received or the city has received from the EPA and the DNR is paired down to dioxin, when in fact, if you read some of our own reports from our own experts and scientists, there are many, many chemicals on that site. So, the moratorium has been a blessing for the residents, because it has given the residents time to learn and understand and try and, the city to try and understand what they're having to deal with, because once the EPA signs off, they no longer have any liability. Once the state of Missouri signs off, they don't have liability. But once we accept that liability and we approve development, we take that liability on. So, it's very important, and I can't thank the previous councils, planning and zoning commissions, and the current administration councils and planning commissioners for giving this the most sincere consideration. And when we go to the next step, I certainly hope that there will be many, many meetings on this to go over some of the reports that the city has received, because I don't know if you've had the opportunity to read all of them, but as Joe said, you know, he probably has file cabinets of them. I know there's people in this room like myself that we have boxes of information. So, it's, it's going to be a sincere learning experiment, or not an experiment, a learning situation, and, um, again, it is really, um, it's really about the future and what will, what will the people be left with? You know, I, I don't know that it's really about the developer. It's about the children that will be here. It's about the parents and the people who want to garden and dig in the dirt, and lo and behold, you know, it's not a safe thing. It's just really not. And to echo what Dan said about Judy Pyatt, I think most of us that have been here a while have met Judy, and while her book is not scientific, it's a real person's chronicle of what can happen, and there are people actually in this room that have also had that similar experience. So, the moratorium was a very good thing, and I appreciate your support for that going forward. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Travis.
Ms. Allen.
Victoria Allen, 1651 Idle Rock Farm Road, 63011. And as organized as I thought I was, I come here and I feel completely discombobulated, but I have five minutes, so hopefully I can pull myself together here. I know this is about Strecker Forest, but I want to call your attention to the fact, because I think it'll give you some sort of idea of what type of geography we're dealing with. The Lake Chesterfield that has been, that you all know about, I'm quite certain, that has, has 23 acres that has lost all of its water a couple of times, and I guess it's never going to fill up again, is straight south from my property, south, north, and my property is straight north of the area in question. 23 acres worth of water, and I have no idea how much that is. I can guarantee you has gone under my property, and I could tell in years past, and I really didn't figure it out until this week when I sat down and looked at the map, that when I would walk down in the dry lot where my horses were, it sounded hollow underneath, that it had changed, and I knew that, but I didn't figure it out. But, but that tells you, and we know that that, that water didn't just go into Cox Creek. That water just sheeted down through all of this crazy geography that is Missouri, and that's what, that's the geography that all of these contaminants were dumped into. We don't know what's underneath there, and we, but we know that it isn't just nice, solid dirt that can be dug out and remediated. I couldn't get past the two letters from the DNR, and, uh, and, and I, and the EPA and the DNR. I couldn't get past the two letters from the DNR and, and the EPA. And I, I thought the letter from the DNR was really telling that, that the water wells that were put in that north, northeast corner were only tested once a year for 10 years. So who knows what it really was? And it was shallow groundwater, so they didn't get anything deep. And, and they admitted that there were challenges from the labs, that they really, that the, that the results were inconclusive because their labs just weren't good enough. But they were able to find metals VOCs, S VOCs at concentrations above health screening levels in their testing once a year for 10 years. So if that was just in those little, those little brief moments of time, you can guess where it goes from there. And we don't even know where, when these were tested. We don't have that information, or at least it wasn't provided in this letter. I think Mrs. Springer is going to discuss a piece of property that's never been addressed that we continue to bring up, that is probably more toxic than any place in the area that is, really would be in the way of any water pipes or sewage treatments. That would have to be disturbed. And, you know, it's like, this is, this property is what it is. I don't care how you clean it up. The geography doesn't lend itself to cleanup, and it needs to be just left alone. And then there was this letter from the EPA. I don't know if you all are aware of the fact that, that the EPA is in a slow process of being dismantled. That in 2017, 29 people were offered, you know, given, given an offer they couldn't refuse. So there's, so the EPA in Region 7 is down 29 employees. So you have this very short letter from an attorney, and, and I know there's some attorneys in the room, and my intention is not to insult you at all or your profession. But this woman felt like she was able to make a determination that the level of dioxin that they found had increased by 50%, and it was because of used roofing tiles that were in the area. So how an attorney is able to make that type of determination, but she did, she's, she was like, oh, well, that's the reason. When in fact, and, and she probably doesn't even know the history of this, this piece of property. But I can assure you that that 50% increase in dioxin was not from roofing tiles that were deposited in the area. There were 120, 150 chemicals that were isolated from Bliss's property next to, on the other side, Grover Callahan's property. There were over 1,200 barrels that had eroded, and the chemicals had commingled, so who knows what that has created? They did a little, you know, attempted remediation on numerous occasions. But again, geographically, you can't, you're not going to remediate it. It's, it's seeped down into who knows where. It's a superfund site. Whatever the EPA does, whatever the DNR says, it's always going to be a superfund site. It's always going to be contaminated. There isn't anything we can do about it except leave it alone. Because I guarantee you also that there isn't anybody that lives around there, had we had any idea, would have moved there. And if this site is developed, I don't care whether it's two houses or whether it's 50 houses, people will not be told the truth. And when they find out, they're going to say, oh, my God, I didn't know. I didn't know where I was moving into or what I was buying. So I know you guys are going to do the right thing. Joe, I think your introduction was, was stellar, and I really appreciate your, your history, and I don't envy you your job. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Travis?
Ms. Springer?
Good evening. Barbara Springer, 84 Strecker Road. The first map, which is getting passed along, contains five properties. Weingard-Dubman and the small Bliss are in Ellisville. And the large Bliss, Wade Simmons and Strecker Forest are in Wildwood. Some of you might be unfamiliar with historic data, so I've included a copy of my speech as well. The final interpretation map is a section from a large 1990 EPA map. And the blackened areas illustrated major drum burials. And this verifies that the northeast corner of Strecker Forest was equally contaminated as the Wade Simmons. The blue line is the Bliss stream. The EPA RA, or Removal Action, was conducted on the south side of the Bliss stream, and they removed only dioxin. They did not address other comingo-toxic chemicals. The Figure 1 Soil Sample Map is from the 2008 DNR Geoprobe Investigation, conducted to determine the source or the deteriorating condition of the groundwater. They found that the source is chemically saturated bedrock that cannot be removed. Trying to blast it out could blow the neighborhood off the map because all of the rock is full of soil gas. This was due to buried drums that deteriorated and tanker truck surface dumping of liquid chemicals that leached down through the soil into the bedrock and the groundwater. The EPA claims that in 1996, they removed the drums and all contaminated soil, and then backfilled areas DU 47 and 48 with clean soil. However, the remaining VOCs, Polytal organic compounds, continuously volatilize, thereby creating soil gas that perpetually rises into the ambient air as toxic vapors. As illustrated on the map, there are seven borings with very high levels of soil gas that are on or adjacent to Strecker Forest in the northeast corner. So while children are enjoying their allotted recreational user dioxin exposure, they'll be inhaling toxic vapors. Above 5 ppm requires wearing a respirator. In Figure 1 Well Locations, monitoring well 1 through 6 are for monitoring shallow groundwater. And SB 1 through 3 are for monitoring soil gas to protect two homes from potential vapor intrusion. Whether VOCs are in soil, water, or bedrock, they continuously volatilize. On the Bliss site, the bedrock is chemically saturated, and the groundwater is highly contaminated. As the fumes rise into the dirt, it's called soil gas. As the soil gas rises into the ambient air that residents are breathing, it's called toxic vapors. If the soil gas penetrates a home foundation, it's called vapor intrusion. To misrepresent these three gas wells as if they are protecting residents from inhaling toxic vapors is outrageous. The agencies have failed to address this dangerous data to public health and converted it into an ongoing investigation which has already lasted for 11 years. Furthermore, the three soil gas wells are not located on the Bliss site, so there is no direct link. Any data can be dismissed because they are downgrade of a subdivision detention pond. Homeowners can be blamed for using herbicides, pesticides, fertilizers, et cetera. Back in 1999, the EPA claimed that the Strecker Forest property was safe for residential reuse. The city wisely hired environmental consultants who proved the EPA claim to be invalid. At this point, trying to find a way to safely build more homes is impossible before proving that the environment is safe for current residents. The burden of proof should be on the agencies, while the city retains access, input, and oversight. Even though the chemically saturated bedrock cannot be removed, nor can the contaminated groundwater, that does not mean that the residents have to live in an unsafe environment. Mundell questioned why the EPA was not mitigating the groundwater. As for the soil gas and toxic vapors, there are gas capture wells and ways for capping the soil and real-time air monitoring so that residents can be warned to stay indoors, et cetera. There are a lot of things that could be done. Please extend the moratorium so that legitimate steps can be taken to protect public health. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments. Mr. Newberry?
No further speaker cards for this public hearing item.
Mr. Vedenich?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The first speaker, Mr. Topic, identified a couple of items that the department failed to include in the packet of information. Those items are the two white papers that were prepared at that time by Ryan Thomas, our city attorney, and others. I will provide those to you in advance of the September 3 meeting, and it'll be part of the packet of information that's available to anyone with interest. I apologize, I forgot about those, and they were not in the file that I used to collect most of the information that's part of the packet of information tonight. I would note that one other item, the letter from the Missouri Department of Natural Resources that was requested by the owner developer of the Strecker Forest site and ultimately provided to the Department of Planning by the attorney representing the developer-owner. There is also a flash drive that contains, I believe, about 1,000 or 2,000 pages of some test results. We've generally made that available. We haven't printed it out in any quantity just because of the concern relating to the environment. But if someone does want that information, we can download it onto a zip drive for you, and you can review it at your leisure between now and September 3. Are there any other questions for the department?
Councilman Werther?
Thank you. Mr. Vedenich, with regards to the response to the second review of the site development plan that went back to Sterling Engineering, what is the progress on obtaining responses to, particularly under General Comments Items 6, 7, and 8?
With regards to 6, their claim has been that the geotechnical report was provided as part of the 2006, 2007 site development plan process that ultimately led to a favorable action by the city. The department believes, though, that since there's been so much activity, there's been additional wells drilled on the property, there's been a substantial amount of site disturbance as a function of testing, that a new geotechnical report would be beneficial to help the city make the appropriate decision for the future. In terms of the sanitary sewer connection, for the most part, they retain the sanitary sewer connection to the west versus the east. Certainly, the department is not encouraging the installation of a sanitary sewer line through the coveted area, the northeast corner of the Strecker Forest site, and onto Bliss itself. Its concerns are that any installation of a sewer between two existing homes in the Strecker Farm subdivision is going to be very disruptive. And certainly, if another alternative does exist, that's an alternative that I believe the Planning and Zoning Commission deserves to hear.
Okay. And I'm sorry, with regard to number 8, don't worry about it. I mean, that's fairly standard. I was going through my notes, and I had written down 8 and just called it out, so no problem there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I believe if the city attorney doesn't object, we'd like a motion to close the public hearing. And then as part of that motion, authorization to prepare a recommendation for September 3.
I have a motion. Commissioner Greg Noni, second. Commissioner Deppler. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Okay. Travis, will you read PZ 14-19?
Yes, sir. PZ 14-19, City of Wildwood, Missouri, 16860 Main Street, Wildwood, Missouri, 63040, care of Department of Planning. I request to develop new legislation relating to small cell technology in association with new telecommunications services pertaining to the placement, installation, and construction of communication and support structures, wireless facilities, and accessory equipment. Administrative procedures related to the consideration thereof by the city and the promotion of the health, safety, and welfare of Wildwood residents, all consistent with current federal and state laws and regulations, all wards.
Thank you, Mr. Newberry. Mr. Vedenich?
Thank you again, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair and members of the Planning and Zoning Commission, if the advertisement sounds somewhat familiar, it should. Earlier this year, 2019, the city attorney and the Department of Planning brought forward to the Planning and Zoning Commission changes to the city's model telecommunications ordinance. Those changes that were necessary to that ordinance that was adopted in the late 1990s by the city of Wildwood were premised on federal and state changes to regulations relating to the telecommunications industry. Many of those changes were not favorable to local control such as exercised by the city of Wildwood. Fast forward to tonight, and as part of that process, where federal and state interests supersede local control, tonight, we are talking about another change. And this relates to small cell technologies, which many of the traditional and larger wireless providers are utilizing across the region at this time. As you know, wireless communications have matured and expanded in the availability of offerings since the inception of them in approximately 1985. Many of the changes are driven by the use of smartphones, and smartphones demand high bandwidth, low latencies, and the capability to provide data at a reasonable speed. Small cell technologies are, for the most part, assist the larger towers in achieving those goals. The state of Missouri passed legislation that requires certain small cell technologies to be exempt from typical zoning laws as administered by municipalities in certain counties. And those changes need to be reflected in legislation promulgated and acted upon by the city of Wildwood. In this particular instance, the Missouri Municipal League, with guidance from our city attorney, has prepared a draft legislation for these small cell technologies. And when I describe those, they are typically smaller poles or structures with small antenna and power sources associated with them. So do not view them as we talked when we updated the model telecommunications ordinances, the large towers, the disguised support structures. These are more, let's say, more acceptable because of their lesser size and intrusion. The public right of way is available to the providers. There is provisions that basically state- There is provisions that basically state cities cannot stop the use of the public right-of-way, but there are a few things that can be done to ensure public safety, in that they do not create obstructions or block site distances, and that in historic districts, certain rules from the zoning authority of a city may still apply. So tonight, the department has provided a brief summary of some of the key points associated with this new legislation from the state of Missouri. And along with that, information that the city attorney had gathered regarding this particular matter as well, which includes the model ordinance for consideration. So tonight, the intent is to accept comments on new legislation that must be promulgated by the city of Wildwood to be consistent with state law and federal requirements mandated by the Federal Communications Commission. And one editorial comment, it's a sad day when nobody seems to care about the cities where most people live.
Thank you, Mr. Vunich. Do we have any speaker cards?
No speaker card for this public hearing item.
Mr. Chair, with your permission, before comments or questions from the Planning and Zoning Commission, we have an expert on this, and Mr. Young. He's been very involved in the Missouri Municipal League's development of the model ordinance and others, and I'd like to give him an opportunity to speak as well. Thank you.
Mr. Young?
I appreciate the kind word from the director about my involvement in this. Similar to what we went through last time, this is another unfortunate situation where the city's hand is being forced by the state legislature. Back in 2018, the state legislature passed the Uniform Small Wireless Facility Deployment Act that has become effective now as of January 1 of 2019. So we have to have a procedure in place for consideration, administrative consideration of these small cell facilities, much of which is focused on their inclusion within right-of-way similar to other utilities that are in public right-of-way. So it's basically the state legislature putting cellphone companies on similar stand, in similar standing as your wired telephone carriers who are authorized to put their poles in city right-of-way. As was mentioned, I've had some involvement in the municipal league in terms of reviewing draft legislation, commenting upon the legislation that was presented to multiple cities throughout, and I've got other cities who have passed similar legislation that we represent. But it is something that unfortunately we are required to do.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Mr. Young.
Any questions? I'll open it for discussion. Commissioner Greg Noni?
I don't know if Mr. Young or Mr. Vunich is the better person to answer this question, but in reading through the information that was provided to us and the, I read the model, the model ordinance and some of the background information from, I think that, as I understood, it came down from the federal government, that we cannot force them to put it underground, and we basically cannot stop them from putting up new poles. And granted, they're not going to be as tall as our wireless poles that we're putting up now, but do we not have any control over forcing colocation of different carriers on the same poles, of the placement of where these poles can be put in, in the right-of-way, and what these poles can look like? You know, we've got subdivisions where for years we've had no above-ground wires whatsoever or above-ground poles, and now we're going to have who knows how many of these poles stuck all over the place, or maybe putting them on light poles, you know, streetlights,
The simple answer is the control we have is limited. And the legislative, and it's interesting, you mentioned the federal legislation, the federal legislation, and it was a regulation that came down, and it came down after the state legislation. So the state, our state moved first, and then we had the federal come down after. But it was near the same time. I mean, they're very close in time. But we do have some regulation that's still out, the director mentioned, certain health, safety, welfare, site distance requirement, things of that nature. There are certain height limitations because they're not true cell towers. I think there is a goal to encourage colocation on some existing facilities, whether they be city facilities or facilities of other entities that are already in the right-of-way. And I think that will be, continue to be encouraged. And in the communications I've had with many service providers, that's their goal also because frankly, it's cheaper for them in the long run. So there are some controls that can be implemented, but they are severely limited by the legislation.
One question I have is it looks like we cannot regulate where they go or how it's set up, but we might be able to regulate the aesthetics of equipment that is not antennas? And that's my question.
Only to a reasonable extent, yes. And the person who knows what I'm talking about gave the appropriate response.
I was thinking more in terms of what we did for North American Water, Missouri American Water with the boxes and so forth.
I think that's possible, yeah.
Mr. Vunich?
It's not a very good hand of cards we've been dealt.
If we can avoid the shiny box on a 20-foot pole, that would be preferred, I think.
I think the key point in Mr. Young's comments may have been part of the first or second sentence when he began his presentation. These are administrative reviews, so the Planning and Zoning Commission or city council will ever be involved in one other than just providing the information to you after the fact when the small cell technology has been approved.
So we have no say in it, basically.
And under my read, no.
Not on a case-by-case basis, no.
If there are no other questions, the department again would respectfully request the public hearing be closed and it be authorized to prepare its report on this matter.
So move.
Mayor Boland, second. Commissioner Beatty. All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Okay, moving on to old business. Travis, will you read PZ 6-19?
PZ 6-19, City of Wildwood Planning and Zoning Commission, care of Department of Planning, 16860, Main Street, Wildwood, Missouri, 63040. I request for the consideration of possible changes to Chapter 415 of the City of Wildwood's Code of Municipal Ordinances that would potentially provide new regulations governing the cultivation, manufacture, transportation, distribution, testing, and sale dispensary of medical marijuana within any NU non-urban residence district, C commercial district, or M industrial district zone parcel of ground within the city of Wildwood. The consideration of such is necessitated by the timeline and requirements established in the constitutional amendment that was approved and passed by the voters of Missouri on November 6, 2018, for such activities. Any considerations relating to any possible new regulations associated with these activities are premised upon the City of Wildwood's required protection of the public's health, safety, and general welfare through the application of its zoning and land use regulations, all wards.
Thank you, Mr. Newberry and Mr. Vunich.
Thank you again, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair and members of the Planning and Zoning Commission, at our last meeting of the commission, the Department of Planning prepared a revised information report relating to medical marijuana. The revisions to its original information report were driven by comments and direction provided by the members of the Planning and Zoning Commission. Tonight, in draft form is the final letter of recommendation that reflects the Planning and Zoning Commission's action at the August 5 meeting. That action allows medical marijuana but limits its cultivation, manufacture, testing, transportation, and sale, as in dispensaries, to any industrial area of the city of Wildwood. An industrial area in the city of Wildwood is limited to the Wildwood portion of the Chesterfield Valley. That area was zoned in 1971 for industrial purposes and would be consistent now, again, with the direction of the Planning and Zoning Commission for medical marijuana. The department believes that the letter of recommendation that is now in draft form reflects the direction of the Planning and Zoning Commission and is ready for final consideration tonight. Therefore, Mr. Chair, the department would respectfully request the motion to approve the draft letter of recommendation as presented to the commission at tonight's meeting.
So move.
Thank you, Mr. Vunich. Recommendation for approval of the department's recommendation by Mayor Boland, second by Commissioner Greg Noni. We'll do a roll call vote.
Commissioner Helfrey?
Yes.
Commissioner Cohen?
Yes.
Commissioner Greg Noni?
Yes.
Commissioner Beatty?
No.
Commissioner Depler?
No.
Chair Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Werther?
Aye.
Mayor Boland?
Yes.
Thank you.
The draft letter of recommendations approved by a 6 to 2 vote.
Mr. Newberry, moving on to new business.
A request of the Department of Planning to allow the modification of the site-specific governing ordinance associated with St. Louis County's PC 219-85, Alfred Hicks and J.L. Mason of Missouri, Inc., south side of Manchester Road, west of State Route 100, street address 16506, Manchester Road, locator number 23U120480, thereby correcting certain scrivener's errors that occurred as the document was transcribed from one format to another at the time of its most recent amendment in the fall 2018, Ward 7.
Thank you, Mr. Newberry and Mr. Vunich.
Mr. Chair, thank you. Mr. Chair and members of the Planning and Zoning Commission, it is never easy for the director of the Department of Planning to stand before a group of appointed officials and residents in the public and say that we made a error. Over the course of the last 23 years, Schnucks Wildwood Crossing has gone through a number of changes. Those changes were driven by leasing rates, tenant concerns, and other items relating to infrastructure and its location as primarily a second-tier property from Route 100. The department has always not done good housekeeping in that when amendments were made, the specific request was just reflected and then the older ordinance attached for such. And as time went on, those different amendments and different pages became more of a housekeeping issue than it liked. And so in this last amendment that was undertaken at the request of the center's owner, the department did a complete retyping of the ordinance, integrated all the changes, and as it thought, all the deletions. One deletion was missed, and it relates to a sign, and the department is respectfully requesting that that sign, as deleted previously, and not requested again by the developer or owner of the center, be deleted again.
Thank you, Mr. Vunich. So move. I have a motion. I have a second. Commissioner Helfrey, second. All those in favor, or we'll do a roll call vote on this one, sorry.
Commissioner Cohen? Commissioner Greg Noni?
Yes.
Commissioner Beatty?
Yes.
Commissioner Depler?
Yes.
Commissioner Helfrey?
Yes.
Chair Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Werther?
Aye.
Mayor Boland?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you all, and again, my apologies, but we caught it, and we want to fix it, and we just don't want to leave it, and hope nobody notices. So thank you. Mr. Chair, just a couple of other items, if I may. Mr. Newberry took the initiative and has provided you a final set of the bylaws as acted upon by the Planning and Zoning Commission, so they are part of your packet tonight, and hopefully you found them to be acceptable. The second item relates to Saturday. Saturday is the city's annual celebration of its incorporation. U-Corporation was actually on September 1, but we found that when we held the event on Labor Day weekend, we usually were fighting an uphill battle in regards to some other people's plans, so we hold it a week in advance. So Saturday, the event starts with the parade at 10:00 a.m., the opening ceremonies are at 11:30 a.m., hosted by Mayor Boland, and then thereafter, a full day of events. I'd like to acknowledge Mr. Cohen, who is one of the owners of the theater. He has been kind enough to let us use the property adjacent, abutting the theater, and recognizes that they does, generally does not help the theater's foot traffic, so we do want to thank you for your kindness and help. But if you get a chance, come on by, there'll be a lot of things to do. I think we have 18 food vendors of all kinds, so it'll be a good day, and the weather forecast says low 80s with morning temperatures in the 60s, so it sounds like a great day to come out and enjoy Wildwood. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Motion to adjourn. Commissioner Helfrey, second by Commissioner Beatty. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Abstentions.
Thank you all. We couldn't do it without you, so we appreciate you all.